Hello, everyone. We're just waiting for our quorum of the Board of Education to begin the meeting. Welcome. Hello, this is the Board of Education meeting. Thank you for your patience. We're just waiting for our quorum to begin the meeting. It appears we now have a quorum. So I'm going to call to order the Board of Education meeting today, Monday, October 26th, for the Board of Education of Hastings on Hudson, New York. Welcome to Dr. Henning Piedmont and Melissa Samansky and Ms. Caraballo, Board Trustees, the presenters we have this evening, and any attending in the in the public. Before we begin, I just have a few housekeeping items. First, I just want to remind any persons on the call if you'd like to participate in public comment. The first public comment period will be for items that are on our agenda this evening. Our agenda is listed on our website. If you have comments that are pertaining to the Board of Education agenda this evening, those will be included to be available for your comment in the first public comment period. And at that time, if you have a comment, you can use the raise your hand feature and the district clerk, Melissa Dilla Barrera, will call on you. If there are general questions, comments to the Board of Education not pertaining to our agenda, please hold those comments to the second public comment period later on in the agenda in this evening. Secondly, I just wanted to comment to anyone. I know that the district has been asked why the Board of Education is meeting remotely. As we had met on premises at the school in September for two meetings, a work session and one Board of Education meeting. The governor has extended the availability for Boards of Education to have their meetings exclusively done remotely, and we had chosen to meet in public despite that. And then after the two incidents of COVID-19 in the district, we decided that we would continue to reconvene remotely. And that's really just to limit the persons on premises in the district to the essential folks for teaching and learning in the district and to limit the number of people in buildings, both the New York State Department of Education and the Department of Health have recommended to school districts that they limit the number of people in and out of the building. So in order to do that, we've decided to, for this time, while the governor's extended it, to continue to meet remotely. And with that, I'll pass it over to Valerie if for any announcements.
Yes, thank you, Lauren, and good evening, Board of Education and all participants and guests. I'd like to first thank the principals in the recognition of National Principals Month, which is the month of October. Their leadership is very important as it is correlated to positive outcomes for student performance. They make a significant difference to outcomes for learners as well as support for all of their faculty and staff. So I'd like to thank them for their dedication to all children and families and support for their faculty and staff, and they work very hard and their days are certainly very long and don't end when they leave the district. So thank you to all of our principals for all our administrators, but since this is national, this is October is National Principals Month. Thank you for everything that you do in service to the children of Hastings. On tonight's agenda, through Putnam Northern Westchester BOCs, which is one of the 36 BOCs operating in the state of New York, who operate to serve the districts and give them an opportunity through sharing contract services to be able to realize savings associated with some of the services they participate in. So what you'll see on the agenda tonight is a a service that we are very grateful for through Putnam Northern Westchester BOCs. It allows us to have a new public relations and communications specialist, and that person's name is Jason Platter. He will take the role or the reins from Janine Janauer, who served in that capacity. Just a little bit about Jason, he has an extensive background in social media marketing, multimedia production, story ideation and pitching, web content management, visual content production, photography and graphics, on-air broadcasting, public relations, communications, article and feature writing, digital video production, and it goes on. He has a bachelor's degree in journalism with a minor in history from SUNY Purchase. He also is bilingual in English and Spanish. He has worked and currently does so as an assignment desk editor and producer for News 12 Westchester. He's also served in the role of Communications Coordinator for the Governor's Office on Storm Recovery. So we welcome him, and in the contract you'll see that the cost to the district for participating in the service is $57,120, but the district receives $23,000 of that back as part of the reimbursement for participating in that service. So that allows Jason to be here five days a week, five hours a day to serve in the in the role of Public Relations and Communications Specialist. So that's really terrific. And as soon as he comes on board, we'll make sure that he's at the November 9th Board Meeting to greet our Board of Education and the members of the district. So I want to thank the Putnam Northern Westchester BOCs for making that possible. And that, you know, in my own experience, they've certainly selected some really outstanding people in my previous capacity in another district. I know them to be an outstanding unit and provides a really amazing, you know, highly professional service. So welcome to Jason if he's watching, but as I said, I'll bring him forward to November 9th Board Meeting as well. I'd like to thank the PTSA SEPTA and the Hastings Education Foundation for their recent fundraising efforts to support the schools, which will provide resources to help us to enhance professional learning, enhance the procurement of digital tools that increase engagement, differentiation, and help children to collaborate with their peers whether they learn in person or at home. So thank you all, and thank you, PTSA SEPTA and HEP for your participation. I'd like to welcome Peacock Parenting Children of Color, who will speak shortly. They've done some amazing work that will complement the work of the district and certainly certainly be in service to all children of the district, not just children of color. Next week, or I'm sorry, Wednesday, Wednesday is the second meeting of the Hastings Police and Reinvention Committee, which I serve on. It's Wednesday at 6:00 PM. It does conflict with the superintendent's chat, which is available every other week, so I will be canceling the superintendent's chat so that I'm able to participate in the Reinvention Committee, and I'll bring forth some additional information to the board with regards to that. Adele Dowling of the Healthy Kids Program contacted me today with an additional flyer. They've received some additional resources, which they are making available to our parents who are in sore need of childcare and affordable childcare at that. Their childcare costs $15 per eight-hour day, and it's through some funding that they make that possible, and this program runs out of the Hudson River Museum. So that flyer flyer will be shared tomorrow morning with our community so that parents can take advantage of that. And thank, I want to thank Adele for making that possible, and she's a strong advocate for children and certainly children and families in their community who desperately need that, you know, that resource. The New York State Department of Health offered districts an opportunity, I'm not sure if you recall this or not, to participate in a snow day pilot program. So what this means is, I mean, this is optional. Some districts took advantage of it, but it it is something that has to be negotiated with the bargaining units because it does require change in language. So as you know, snow days are traditionally non-instructional days that, you know, make a lot of people happy. And 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 with the snow day pilot initiative, school districts can take their current remote learning plan and convert those days into instructional days. And of course, they'd have to do something with the days, the additional days, because there are additional days that would have to be used in a different way, and certainly those would be days, probably vacation days or days off. But I wanted to bring that to your attention, you know, if I don't know if you've been paying attention to what's happened in this in the plain states. So whenever there's a massive snow or, you know, inclement weather, I always think of those days. So when we do have inclement weather, we won't be using, we're not participating in the pilot, so those are still regular snow days for us and not remote instruction days. Not to say that that won't change sometime in the future, but certainly this year they're not, and as I said, if they did, they would have to be negotiated. And I think that takes care of it, and thank you all so much, and I look forward to the presentation from from Peacock. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. Melissa Samansky, do you have comments you'd like to share this evening?
I do. Good evening, everyone. So I just wanted to provide a couple of updates. Last week, the K-12 Mathematics Committee met to continue our work. I want to say thank you to Greg Stevens, who's our Mathematics Department Chair, who's been an excellent partner in co-creating, and our committee. This is a committee of self-identified professionals, ranging from directors, teachers, administrators at the building level, K through 12. So the purpose of our recent session was to deepen understanding around the standards for mathematical practice. We explored the first four practice standards and three inquiry questions. One, what does the practice standard look like in student engagement? Two, what does it look like in students' products? And three, what does it sound like? And we did that for elementary, middle, and high. Hillside Writing Curriculum. Amy Kaisers, Gravity Goldberg, Heather Frank, Literacy Consultant, and I met together to plan next steps for professional learning. We looked at priority areas of focus around solidifying units of study with a lens on bringing them to life in a blended learning environment, understanding how to design and analyze assessments through the use of a common approach and a common tool, and also using assessments to inform next steps for instruction. This past Flex Wednesday, we focused on ACHIEVE 3000. That was a tool for teachers of ELA, Special Education, and ENL, five through eight. And that one is a literacy resource to support student intervention and also differentiated small group instruction. And then finally, our first formal chair council of the school year took place on October 19th, 2020. A portion of the meeting was dedicated to a work session where the department chairs reviewed curriculum synopses. So our departments have been working very diligently, K-12, to design curriculum synopses, and those will all be uploaded to our website and front-facing once they've been given a final review by the administrators. Right now, we're at the point in the process, we're actually going through, and we're just aligning for formatting because they were just submitted in different ways. So this is taking a little while, but the content is all there, and we're looking forward to sharing that publicly. And then additional discussion with the department chairs focused on successes and challenges around assessment practices, which have been different in this environment. So this will actually be the primary area of focus for our next chair council. So that work is awesome. And I just want to thank our educators who are, you know, really rolling up their sleeves. They're continuing to look at moving programs forward and working very collaboratively around that. So thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Maureen, could you share the comments you've prepared?
Sure. So Valerie, Jo, and myself, we met last week with representatives of communities solar program, and they're a group that's working locally with Sustainable Westchester. They're working to install solar panels on building rooftops that will actually provide energy back to the grid. So unlike some of the previous contracts that the district has either gone out for a request for proposal and other contracts that we had entered into, this is a bit different where they're really looking to lease space at the district, you know, potentially lease some of our rooftop space and install panels, and then that electricity would go back to the grid for local community consumption. So we're, we just started a conversation with them, and we're going to kind of, they're going to look at both buildings to see what the feasibility of doing some work here would be, and we're also going to continue to, you know, look into either also potentially getting our own solar panels at the same time. So that was a really great meeting, and we're going to continue that discussion in the hopes with our new roofing that'll be completed, we'll be able to kind of move that project forward finally. Our technology team is currently researching possible resources to help parents and and as well as teachers to better monitor student website use. We've just had some parents with our district issued Chromebooks, and they were wondering if there's ways to either limit getting some of the use of either YouTube or some of the other web resources. So we're currently looking into some additional filtering options in addition to our current filtering and seeing if we can filter down some content more granular and also looking into two other softwares. So we'll be providing an update to the board in a few weeks and with a recommendation for that. And the Hillside deployment of Chromebooks is well underway, and we're very hopeful at this point that anyone in the district that either needed a new replacement device or a device will be able to fully meet that need by the beginning or mid-November. So I just want to thank the technology team for all their hard work and the assistance of the building level admins for helping with that deployment. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. I see Sophia and Sabine both here. Welcome. I'd love to hear, and the board would love to hear any comments or report that you've prepared.
Yes. Hi. Well, I'm really excited to hear about the solar panels. It's exciting. I know the Environmental Club will be super excited to hear about that. The biggest news this week was that Flex Wednesdays are ending. A lot of people are super excited because Flex Wednesdays were kind of stressful and some people are bummed out. But there is one concern. The way it works, gold group will always be in for an extra ACE, and green will always be in for an extra BDF. So some people were concerned they might end up falling behind on ACE or BDF days. But on a super positive note, clubs are really starting to pick up speed. The Environmental Club had a beach cleanup and did some maintenance work in the woods last weekend. The Academic Challenge Team has now had five practices, and their first big tournament is this weekend. And the National Honor Society has begun tutoring, and there are a ton of requests coming in every single day for senior tutors. And this week is really stressful and super exciting for seniors because college applications are all due November 1st. But everything is exciting and stressful, but almost in a normal way, which is really refreshing. And Sabine?
Okay, so a note on sports. They generally make life seem more normal, which is really good. The Student Union is trying to find ways to create a friendly green team versus gold team rivalry. And first way that they're doing that is through this week's Spirit Week. And people dress up on the days that they're in the building, and then they receive points based on how spirited they are, and whichever team has more participation, more see a prize. And other funding raising ideas that haven't mentioned are a COOB tournament, a Batman tournament, a drive-in movie night, and a drive-through carnival. And the Student Union intends to execute at least some of those ideas before the weather gets too cold. So yeah, that's it for me.
Thank you, Sabine and Sophia. It's really always a pleasure to hear your experiences from your perspective. At this point, the Board welcomes public comment to any items that are on the agenda for this evening. If there are participants in the meeting If there are participants in the meeting right now that have a comment on the items that are on our agenda, you could kindly use the raise your hand feature on Zoom and Melissa Deliberera will make your comment, make your self, make you available to speak. Melissa, is there anyone that you see raising their hand?
No, um, there's nobody's hand raised right now, but I did receive an email from a Lauren Jen who is on right now, but I don't know if her comment has to do with our current agenda. So.
Dr. Jen, if your comment has to do with the agenda, if you could use the raise your hand. And if not, we'll expect to see your hand raised at the second comment period.
Melissa, I did see a Terry Frank.
Kaplan, I think it was Valerie. They took their hand down.
Oh, okay. Okay, that's why.
All right. So we'll move forward. The Board of Education is very happy to welcome organization Parenting Children of Color. I don't know, Valerie, if you want to say a few words and explain the participants that will be sharing a bit about their organization.
Thank you, Lauren. I'd like to acknowledge the, this wonderful group of dedicated parents and community members who, over the summer, created a very important group and opportunity in the community called Parenting Children of Color. They have, you know, you know, emerged sort of, you know, grown the idea to this, you know, really important organization that will have a lasting impact, you know, on the community. And as I said, it's not just for students of color, but it, you know, it will impact the lives of students who, as you know, I've heard from members of Peacock and other children who have graduated from Hastings that there's a sort of a reality that they're not connected to when they're in Hastings that, you know, is surprising to them when they leave. And hopefully, it's the work of Peacock and, you know, in terms of really helping us to be aware and make shifts and adjustments in the, some of the practices that we engage in that, you know, don't necessarily see that sort of outcome that awaits children when they leave the Hastings and go on to college and out into the world, among other really important work that they're doing, which I'll let them speak to. They have organized an agenda which is attached to board docs. So please make sure that you take a look at that if you want to click on to that to just take a look at some of the discussion points that they're going to share. So I'd like to turn it over to, to the Peacock leadership team that's here. And I'd like to welcome you and thank you for your work in contributing to a better Hastings.
Thank you so much, Valerie, and we accept this gracious invitation you've extended to us. At this time, I'm just going to introduce myself. I am Demaris Lois Yamoa-Lang. I'm a co-founder and acting as the president of the Governing Board of Peacock.
Good evening, everyone. I am Christina Catalan. I am the co-founder and I also serve as a board official.
Hi, my name is Vicki Lynn Allen, and I serve on the Governing Board as Budget Director.
Hi, everyone. I'm Karina Vialona, and I work as the Communications Director for Peacock. Thank you for having us.
So at this time, my colleague and co-founder Christina Catalan, which I know most of you know, she's actually a household name here, is going to talk to us about who we are and each of the Governing Board members would just talk about some of the talking points that we have laid out. And then we will accept any questions after that. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you again for having us. So Peacock is a community group composed of persons of color at the forefront of our own cause race and who need our voices to be heard and respected. Peacock's purpose is to work with all families of color, as well as families who have children of color, and allows for all families to have another community group to turn to when they would like or feel the need for advocacy in this district. Ultimately, our purpose is to champion the representation of all, including persons of color. The purpose of this is to allow the students of color to have the opportunity to see themselves represented in the school curriculum, as well as the staff and faculty, as this plays a major role in their self-esteem, as well as their desire to learn and participate in all areas of the district, not just the ones chosen for them and recommended to them.
So Peacock's mission, or Peacock's mission statement actually, is a group of supporting, is a group supporting ethnicity, cultural expression, fair treatment, and education for persons of color.
Okay, some of what Peacock is looking to do is work in a very collaborative and collegial approach alongside the authority, authorizing bodies of both the community, meaning the mayor and the executive board, as well as the authorizing bodies of our schools, superintendent, the Board of Ed. We'd like to work together to address issues that impact Hastings residents, including students, obviously, and people of color in general.
Thank you so much. So I just want to just put some light onto our operational structure and how we achieve in this and what we've, some of the things we've done so far. So we have five committee establishments, and what we intend to do and what we have done is to engage the general public in projects such as educational workshop outreachers just to foster an understanding and also try to help the community, kids, students to unlearn norms that perpetuate discrimination, self-hate, and also provide this support and create a sense of belonging and togetherness among all residents. And so we, the Governing Board, intend to, from time to time, meet with the authorizing bodies, just like my colleague had mentioned, just to present certain concerns of individuals and the collective to all of you.
So, um, now I would like to speak a little bit about supporting and joining Peacock. And of course, how to support us is either financially or donating your time. So on our website, we have a donation tab that you're welcome to look at at peacock, P dash C O C dot O R G. We have a donation tab there. And as I said, you can also donate your time. So the financial support is needed to cater to the running of the organization. So we invite you to join the organization. And we invite you to volunteer because our framework has been designed with a flexibility that provides participants the ownership of volunteering in a chosen capacity that caters solely to their availability. So think about joining.
So at this point, we are open to any questions that the board may have for us and if is part of the scope of the meeting, the public as well.
I want to say thank you so much for convening together and presenting the organization to the board and to opening, and to Valerie, to you inviting Peacock to, to the Board of Education so that we can begin communication together. And certainly, if any board members have any questions for the leadership of Peacock, please go ahead.
Hi. I also wanted to echo what Allison said, and thank you for coming and speaking to the board and hopefully those lots of people watching tonight. I'm wondering if you could tell us a little bit about some of the things that you've been doing, what kinds of programs or activities that you did in this, you know, since you've started or what, or what you have planned for this coming year, especially in the COVID context.
Sure. Thanks a lot. So we are just literally four months old. We started two months ago, and two main programs that comes to mind is we had a candid conversation, which was through Google Meet. And the educational team organized this candid conversation about as an incident that happened at the tennis court that had to do with a family of color being singled out and being asked whether they actually lived in this neighborhood because they were at the tennis court. And it turns out that they had a permit and they lived here. So we just wanted to just have a candid conversation about microaggressions and also whether there was really, just to look at both sides of the coin to this particular situation. And it was very, very, it was very good. Like, we had very candid conversations about people's views and no one felt being attacked or threatened. And another program we've had was just a TIBLAN event to just let people know what this organization is doing. We are here for a collaborative, collegial approach. Because at the end of the day, we are just all part of the human race and we just want to live in that harmony. But there is, I mean, I'm a neurobiologist, and I know for a fact that there are certain things that play a very subconscious impact in our brain, in the lives of our children. What they get exposed to early enough is necessary for them to be able to be who they are without this subconscious negativity that our society is faced with. So we just want to make sure that we deal with the root of the problem in an effective way. We intend to do other things. To answer your second questions, we have laid out healthy beings of color. We have, we know Caucasians, families that have adopted or they have persons of color. They want to know how to treat their hair. We have all those other community kind of events laid out. We are going to have, we intend to have other candid conversation series. We intend to have a workshop between the law enforcement officers and the youth in a safe environment, healthy and safe environment in a way that will foster, again, collegiality. So we have a lot, and you could see most of it on our website, and we are working really hard towards it. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I sit on the Diversity Committee, and I just wanted to take the opportunity to laud Ms. Catalan because she really did a very impressive job of fleshing out, I think, a variety of the goals that the group has set out for itself, including a college preparation workshop for first-generation students, STEM workshops for underrepresented scientists, reestablishing culture shock as a program in the district, and, you know, and a lot of workshops that focus and revolve around social justice. And I will just speak personally that, for me, the, the first item that was raised, or at least that I mentioned, and I, and I know that it is of importance to people, even in our very educated and affluent community, is the preparation workshops for first-generation students. I'm a first-generation student. I was born into a family where my parents had a third and a sixth grade education, and they were laborers. And had it not been for their emphasis on picking fruit and, you know, strawberries and grapes, I would not have had the opportunity to pursue a higher education. I certainly would never have found myself serving on a board such as this. I consider it an honor and a privilege, but I also consider it a real testament to the integrity of this community and how we can collaborate in a really effective way when we build upon the, I think, the time that people contribute in a very meaningful way to make it an expansive community so that we're exposed to people of different walks of life. We can't assume that everybody comes to the table with the same opportunities because there are needs in all types of communities. So I really want to thank you for bringing these issues, you know, to the front and center of our community. And you can count on my support in whatever way it will be helpful to your efforts. I am the mother of three boys of color in our district, so this hits me in a very personal way. And I just want to say, you know, genuinely, I, I have such appreciation for you as civic leaders and for honestly, all the members of our community and our district community and professionals as well who do so much every day to make it, you know, to offer a variety of opportunities to, to students wherever they are in the spectrum of opportunities. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I, I'm just looking through the site right now, and I'm assuming that as you continue to work, you'll keep this updated with events and we can continually to look. I see that some events have passed. But this is great. And first, it's, you seem so organized. I thought that this was like a, I don't know, region-wide or county-wide, and I'm looking at the website. This is just a Hastings initiative. So this is, you know, really great level of focus and organization. It's, it's really inspiring to see. So thank you.
Thank you. I would just have to be clear that we started off as a community group, but we are now a non-for-profit because it was running faster than we thought we could handle it because other communities showed interest to our work. And so we just decided to make a non-for-profit. But most of us on, on the committee, including advisory board members that are not here with us, roughly almost 15 people have joined forces with us, mostly Hastings residents. So yeah, but thank you for the consent.
Yeah. And, you know, I think it's really critical that the lines of communication stay open with the board and obviously with, you know, with the town government as well. And, you know, to the degree that you feel as though there's help or support or a role for the board to play in anything, you know, please certainly reach out to, to us because I think that this is, as I said, this is really, and I know, Ms. Catalan, your level of energy and effort over the past number of months has been truly inspiring to me and to others. And while I don't know everyone else on the board, just the, the level of organizing and focus that you have here is inspiring to see. So we'll look forward to continuing to partner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to echo everything that's been said as well. I've had a chance to speak with all four of you in the past and excited about what you're doing. Also excited about some of the projects that we've had a chance to talk about just on a personal level. But can you talk about maybe, I love the fact that this was started to really allow parents of color to speak for yourselves. I think that's been, you know, sorely missed in the community. But can you speak about how, you know, parents of, you know, non, you know, parents or, you know, white, white members of the community can, can get involved with you guys, you know? This is, you know, really a collaborative effort, as you mentioned. So maybe, you know, I, I would love to hear, you know, your, your thoughts on how everyone can kind of lend a hand and support you in the best way.
Thank you, Jeremy. So I would answer this as well. Hopefully, there are other questions that my colleagues will pick up. But absolutely, this is, this organization, I, I know if you browse in our website, it talks about how we want to be our own voice. Now, we just, I just want to use the analogy of women's movement, correct? When, when women are having their movement, they want their voices to be heard and respected as such because the whole idea is that the males will serve as allies. But if a movement has males at, at the forefront, it just defeats the purpose, right? So yes, the presence of color, this organization being that is parenting children of color is collaborative, but we do have Caucasians, white folks that are part of this organization. They serve in, in the capacity as advisory council. We have them being on. They serve in, in the capacity as advisory council. We have them being on, as commentators. My husband is white and fully supports this work. So yes, we, we are, like I said, we are just four months old. But we need all the support from every single person that wants the heart for us all to, to be collegial with one another and also be open to learning things that, or on learning things that otherwise is not allowing our society to live harmoniously like we should. So yes, please send us an email. Jeremy, I think you're part of the advisory council, if I will recollect. I, I think I ruled you in.
I'm happy to be part of it.
Thanks. So please send us, just send us an email to peacock@peacock.org. We will discuss how you could impact us and advise us, support us. We need a lot of financial support because we did not realize this was going to be bigger than us. So that will be very helpful to, to do, to sort of work with some of the programs that we really want to start now, like the college prep, the, the conversation among the, the, through the ICE project that Ms. Catalan is championing, needs some financial support to, to get it going. Because we want to invite all these individuals to have the conversation with, with the high school students. It doesn't have to be just persons of color, but all the high school students, just to have a more community-based collaboration between the police force and, and our kids. So yes, just send us an email or feel free to call us.
And I would just like to add that we do encourage or, you know, our allies, parents of children of color who are not of color themselves to participate, to join us as well. Simply because when you have a child of color and you yourself are not of color, you may not realize what campaigning, advocating, or, you know, just being there for your child looks at, looks like during certain situations. And the, our purpose is to help you navigate those waters. It does not, when advocating for a child of color or a person of color, it doesn't look the same way as a Caucasian person may advocate. Sometimes we need to navigate those waters differently. A lot of times we need to navigate those waters differently. And I have had Caucasian parents already reach out to me and say, hey, I don't know how to address this. Or I've addressed it this way and I seem to have gotten a negative response. So that, so we definitely encourage everyone to join us, to reach out to us in any avenue that they need assistance with. And we would definitely connect them with the proper committee at Peacock so that they can get the assistance that they need.
Hi, I just wanted to say thank you for the, the work you're doing. This is very exciting. And to see if maybe our district can put a link to their website in one of our Hastings dailies. It may, I know it was in our agenda today, but that might help for people who couldn't attend the meeting tonight. Just to, again, see for a few different blasts that they're out there and, and be able to read about them.
Thank you. Sure.
We've already committed to making sure, I mean, Tesfa and I are part of
Yes, yes.
And we are already committed to making sure. Actually, I'm on the advocacy committee, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
We are definitely going to make sure that there's information available through the Hastings Daily and the Hastings happening. So that lots of, that everyone in Hastings and around Hastings knows about the organization and supports the work. So once again, thank you all for your wonderful work, your courageous work and your, you know, very important work.
Thank you. Thank you for having us and we hope to keep in touch sometime. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I do, the board does hope that you do keep in touch and, you know, adding information on the daily would be helpful. And perhaps, you know, a permanent link on our website alongside PTSA and SEPTA would be an appropriate avenue also. And then of course, if you have any specific events, if you submit those flyers, they will be to the district. They could be included in our blast out to the community for attendance.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Sure. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you. Isn't there a place on our website where we list community groups?
There is underneath the community tab where PTSA, SEPTA and the Hastings Education Foundation are. That would be an appropriate location.
I think that would be great.
We'll work with them to make that happen.
We can move on to our business items. Are there any questions from the board on business items one through eighteen?
I just had one quick question. Just, Maureen, can you just, the, the piggybacking? What are, what are the implications of that? I just wasn't clear.
That's just to allow for us to get the maximum state aid. And it was, we had done one previously for the school year contract. And they also needed us to go back to submit it for our summer school contract because we did in fact do a piggybacking bid with the consortium. So when we sent it up to the state aid, they also wanted us to do a separate one for the summer school.
Got it. Okay.
It's a, yeah, so we're all going to submit it with our contracts revised.
So I'm, I'm going to break up the business items just because I will be abstaining from number nine. So is there a motion to approve business items one through eight?
So moved.
And a second?
Second?
Is there a motion to approve business item number nine? And a second?
Second?
All in favor? And is there a motion to approve business items ten through eighteen?
So moved.
And a second?
Come on, guys. Second?
All in favor? All right. Is there, are there any questions regarding? It doesn't appear that there are any placements listed on the agenda. Am I not seeing them?
No, there aren't, Lauren.
There aren't. Thank you. Just making sure I didn't see them. Okay, there are no placements for CPSE and CSC on this agenda. We'll move on to personnel. Are there any questions regarding the appointments one through seven? Is there a motion to approve the appointments one through seven?
All moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? There are amendments one through four. Are there any questions regarding those amendments? Is there a motion to approve the amendments one through four?
All moved.
And a second?
Second?
All in favor? There are two leaves of absence. Are there any questions regarding leaps of absence one and two? Is there a motion to approve these leaps of absence?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? And there's one retirement. Are there any questions or comments regarding this retirement?
I just wanted to say something quickly about George, who's been with the district for over two decades. And I, I just, my biggest interactions with George came as one of the core people who always works on the used book fair. And I just, I don't think I've ever heard George, or any of the custodians for that matter, but say no to any great ask that we had. And from helping people get tea to helping their credit card machines work, to moving vast amounts of boxes up and down stairs and storage and out of storage. And he really just has been an incredible help to the, to us getting that done. So very appreciative of his work.
Yeah, and I just wanted to also thank George for his service to the district. I was gonna, you know, say something after the, after it was voted on. George has worked in the district for twenty-three years and he really, you know, George is such a special person. And, and, you know, he's not only cares so much about the building, it's just his way of with the children. And, you know, even my own children that, you know, just love George at Hillside and, you know, he'll be very missed. And he really took time and has helped train and, you know, always was a good mentor for his team up at Hillside and district-wide. So we're really going to miss him, but we really are happy for him that he'll be able to enjoy his well-deserved retirement with his family. So we wish George all the best and we'll have a couple of months to say our farewells to George before he departs for his retirement.
I also would like to say to give a special thank you to George. Kind of hard to imagine the schools without him and his sort of warmth and generosity of spirit. I've known him, well, I don't know, for two decades. But I've known him for a long time when he worked in the high school. And he was one of the original people who would help us on Saturday mornings with rec basketball. And he was always willing and able to help out in any way. And, and then once he moved up to Hillside, I, it was always like seeing an old friend when I had to go to Hillside for something. And George, it's hard to imagine, I don't know if you're watching this, but it's hard to imagine our schools without you. We're going to miss you. And I mostly want to thank you for your many, many years of incredible dedication to this, to the schools, to the community and, and to the kids. You are really so well-loved and appreciated. And thank you so much for all of the hard work that you've, you've done over these many years.
And I'd also like to just comment on a portion of George's letter informing us of his desire to retire, which speaks volumes to him. So he points out, you know, that it was his pleasure to work with Joe Monarano, a wonderful leader, inspiring leader, who made everyone feel valued and, you know, balanced the, the needs of the school with, you know, and the students. And he's going to miss working with them. And he's mostly, and he's going to miss everyone in Hastings. So I think that that speaks, that says a lot about George and George's, you know, acknowledgement of, you know, what Joe Monarado has done to make sure that the entire team, custodians and buildings and grounds members feel like a part of, you know, a community of them within themselves and a family. So, you know, congratulations, George. You're really a wonderful, you know, dedicated, you know, model for others. So thank you for all of your years of service, your twenty-three years of service. And as Maureen said, you, you deserve your, your retirement and you've earned it. So enjoy it all.
Is there a motion to approve George's retirement?
So moved.
And a second?
Second?
All in favor? Is there, are there any questions regarding the Board of Education minutes from our meeting on October fourteenth? Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the Board of Education meeting on October fourteenth?
All moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, we're going to move on to the committee reports. It lists policy. I didn't know if Valerie, you wanted to speak on that now or just move on to the new business, include that in the new business, or if you wanted to give an overview now, it's listed in the agenda.
You know what, we can, I can wait until it's acted upon. I'll share the details afterwards.
Great. All right. So we'll move on to then what's listed as old business. And it's a construction project update from Maureen. I know that when we last discussed this, the board had a few questions and you've responded by preparing some more information for us.
Yes, thank you. Melissa, if you can share your screen with the presentation for us? So while she's doing that, tonight I did prepare some slides. And really, the, the slides are very, there's just a few of them. And what, what I'm going to be going over is the financial impact of either of both delaying the Hillside addition. That has been, there's been some discussion around and then also commencing with the project as planned. So this is really just kind of laying out why we are moving forward with the project. You know, where we currently are and continuing with that process. And by sharing the slides tonight, just to kind of see some of the, the financial impacts related to both doing, moving forward and or delaying the project. Here we go. Thanks, Melissa. Okay, so you, you can proceed to slide two, please. Okay, thank you. So this slide here really is, is focusing on the delaying of construction at Hillside. And what would the cost be? And there's both direct costs and delaying. And those are the, the first three bullets there. So if there was to be a delay in the construction of Hillside, one of the main factors in, in looking at why the cost would be so significant is we currently have a construction manager service agreement. And that agreement is an agreement for a period of time. And not only would they, are they overseeing multiple projects currently, the roofing and parapet reconstruction at the middle school. But they are, you know, part of the construction manager work is that they're managing your entire work that is going on in the district. And currently, we did, we do have a contract which we signed into and when we began these projects. And if we were to delay the, the project for a year or so, we would have to enter into a new additional construction manager service agreement. And the amount, there's a range here, but just to kind of give you a sense, because of course, we would have to bid out that work again. And currently, we're paying thirty-five thousand dollars a month when we're in construction. So just to give you a sense of what that cost would be over the course of, and this is kind of playing it both of being on the little bit at the lower end. But based on that current contract, which we know we did that work out and we know the cost associated with that, that is pretty much thirty-five to forty thousand dollars a month. Being this project is about a twelve or thirteen month project, it, you know, could range anywhere. If we were to be able to get a low-end contract to three hundred to four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and that's a hard cost. That's a direct cost in delaying the project. Then there's also, as we've spoken about in other meetings, when we, when we've discussed our budgets on all of our projects, the escalation of materials and labor. And currently, that is still tracking a four percent a year. And, and the main driver, of course, in escalation of construction projects is the labor cost. Labor costs do not go down. We pay, we're required to pay prevailing wage. Prevailing wage is the negotiated amount that's paid to the different trades. And similar to our own contracts, you know, the cost of health insurance, the cost of retirement benefits that are also associated with these contracts, they go up year over year. They do not go down. They, even in recessions, they don't go down. So that is why the construction, even if, if gas prices go down a bit, there's not typically a significant reduction in the cost of construction year over year. And this is pretty much holds true. And, and sometimes when we see an escalation in materials for, for different reasons, this could even be higher. But I'm just tagging it for what we're, we're currently seeing in the market. And that's about 4% a year. And that's it, just on the cost of delaying Hillside. Each year delayed, we'd be looking at about $350,000 escalation of cost for that work. Then of course, if we were to delay it and we were to issue at a later time a secondary bond, there are costs associated with a bond, including financial consultants, bond counsel, and just going through a rating with Moody's, which you have to do every time you do a new bond. So that is, these are direct costs with associating with delaying and needing to reissue another bond. And that's, again, they could even be a bit higher, but, but in around that cost, each, each borrowing. Then the second category on the slide here is what I call the delay reimbursement from the state. Currently for the Hillside project, we have expended professional architectural services on this project, about $336,000 roughly. Again, the, the design and the construction documents associated with this project have already been, you know, done for the district, they've been completed and they've been submitted to the state. Then there has also been some permits that we've had to issue in order to get the, the Hillside project part of our approval process. And that included geographical studies at Hillside and some other surveying surveys. So that was about $40,000 a year. So we've already expended this cost in order to get the state funding or the reimbursement back from the state on these hard costs that we've already spent. We need to do the project completed and submitted to the state. It, it cannot be submitted, the cost associated with this project can only be reimbursable once they're submitted as a final project cost. And so right now, delaying the project, so those two, you know, together approximately close to $700,000. As we know, we get approximately about 40%, so we're back from the state. By not submitting these projects, this is money that we will have to bond for because we do, we did spend it. And we, and we will not be receiving any reimbursement back until we do this work. So again, there's a delayed, a delay in receiving funds back on money that's already spent beyond what we anticipated. So this money will not have a, will not, will need to be borrowed, will need to be paid back. And there will not be any aid back to cover any of that cost. Next slide, please. Okay, so this side, the, the previous one, Melissa, please. Slide three. Thank you. So really what I just tried to do is break down, you know, what the first, the first column here, we just discussed the delayed costs. And really, I didn't even include some of those other delayed reimbursements. I really just kept it to professional services. And again, I went on the low end here of 300,000, assuming, you know, we could get a contract that low, although it would more than likely be much higher than that. And then I just, you know, I'm using a two-year delay because of course, if, if, I think, if there's a concern around the economy and the economic impact of this project, you know, I just wanted to kind of show if we were to delay this two years from, from now. So right now, the estimated cost on that, and again, just being conservative, would be about a million dollars just in delaying the Hillside project. And it could actually be a lot more, but again, just to kind of give you a baseline of what, what the cost of delaying that work would be. Then on the right-hand side is if we were to move forward with the Hillside construction project. And the two costs associated with that, that I'm proposing or that we would be proposing anyway, is the banned interest. And the interest here is just the banned interest related to the borrowing for the Hillside project, not for the entire project, because there's other work that's already been either already completed or underway. So the column there really just represents if we were to move forward, you know, how much is that interest related to that project going to cost the district? And in year one, you'll see, we will, I'll get into further detail on the, the next slide. But year one, the interest on the borrowing needed for, to commence with the Hillside project would be about $55,000. And then the year two interest, again, on that work would be 90,000. And so again, I, I put this here, although it's not really additional cost, because we've always been committed to doing it. And at, you know, in the future, if we were to bond for this project, we would be paying interest on it as well. But just to really give you a sense of what the immediate cost of moving forward with the Hillside project would be. So you can kind of see how those two things over the, over a two-year period, how they compare to each other. And you can see that the, the concern about delaying it is, is just the, the additional costs on, on the Hillside project. And that's really what's been driving our decision-making is that, you know, the additional cost, not only beyond that, if we were to delay it, the issue would be where would that money come from? And what, and it would need to, if it needed to come from design, then you would either have to expend more professional service money because we have a design, we have construction documents for that design. If, if we needed to scale back to recoup some of this cost, you, you know, there would also be another cost in doing that as well. So I think right now, you know, the, the cost aside, you know, we also still have some issues in terms of our instructional space at Hillside and as well as our ADA access. And until we move forward or, you know, move forward with the, the work at Hillside, those, in addition to the, the costs associated with design, those issues will still be around and that, that's also of a concern. Next slide, please. So slide, thank, a slide for Melissa. Thanks. So what I did here is I just really wanted to put a five-year outlook for, for this project, because again, you know, the, we've, obviously we already have approval and we've, we've spoken a lot about the financial impact. And I understandably, there's a lot of concern around, especially in the next few years around the budget and about the tax implications to our residents in moving forward with this work. So just to kind of lay out what, what the financing plan will be. And again, this now reflects not only the Hillside project, but the, also the other work that is either completed or underway or going to be also worked on in, in this upcoming year. So the recommendation would be that in January, February of this upcoming 2021, the district would issue a ban of $14 million. And again, this would help us finance not only the work that's begun, but again, to, to commence with the Hillside work. The cost of issuing a ban currently for $14 million for us, the cost, the estimated tax rate, and again, this is like fresh off the presses, we could borrow that at a half a percent. And that would, that would require us to make next year in our budget, our 21, 22 budget, we would need to pay back $70,000 in interest in order to get the entire work, including Hillside underway. Just to remind anyone who is looking at the presentation, the previous slide has the portion of that, excuse me, of that ban that's related to the Hillside addition work. So, so that would be, and of course, the first year, we were still with active building projects. It takes, after substantial completion of filing all the documents with the state, when, when projects are finalized, the building aid does not kick in until a later time. It's about 18 months after you get all your paperwork into the state. So then my recommendation for year two, and this would again be the January of 2022, we would then look to borrow our entire $18 million, which was a little bit shy of what we have authorization for, but that would be the recommendation. At that time, we would pay back the initial $14 million ban. And then we would have the other money. And as, as the board is aware, there's also additional projects, the middle school auditorium and the music room and music suite in this building that would also be ongoing throughout this process. The first year, we would be required to make a small principal payment on the ban. And again, although the current market rate for bands is significantly lower, just for illustration purposes, I did use the, the ban interest rate going up to 1%. It could potentially still be at that, you know, half percent as it was, as it currently is. But again, going off of, you know, even if there was some, some increase in the market. And I'm laying out here what our interest payment would be on that, that secondary ban. And again, what, what's nice about issuing a ban, again, it's allowing for those projects of the state to be closed and for that state, state building aid that we, you know, are relying upon to help offset some of the impact of, of this debt come onto the books. So you know, at that point in time, and when we borrow the $18 million ban, we'll have some building aid coming in. So you'll see the resulting debt service for that year. And then, then again, they, then in, then after that, my recommendation would be at that point to issue the bond. Again, this is actually showing an increase in the market and this is putting it out. If there's a steady increase, currently, right now, we could probably borrow the ban, or excuse me, bond for about 1% or so. But it still does make sense and districts, you know, typically issuing a ban in your first year is, is the way all districts go. It's not an unusual thing to do. And part of that is again, because you have different pieces of the work, you certainly don't want to borrow the entire amount that you don't need. As you know, we've, we've been able to, you know, finance and kind of borrow some cash in our reserves on hand. So we've been able to delay the issuing of our ban to, and which has been good because the interest rate is actually extremely favorable right now. So the first year, we would always issue a ban, what the recommendation here is to roll a secondary ban. That way to really help make sure that we're starting to get that stated, state aid in when, at the time when we're going to issue that bond. So let me just go on to the next slide, because this really speaks to the tax rate impact for, for individuals in, in the community. And this is just an important, you know, slide, because it really just illustrates what, you know, this basically takes what I'm, what we spoke about on the earlier slide and kind of give, you know, what is it going to cost an individual taxpayer? So this scenario, so we're, as I mentioned earlier, you know, we would be issuing the ban in January. And the resulting impact on next year's budget, it would be a 0.16% tax rate impact. That would translate to $27.82 of an increase for each taxpayer. You know what, I have to disminimize this because I'm looking, and then that, but the, that's for the entire $14 million ban. The amount for next year, the tax rate increase for just the Hillside project for next year would be $17.80. That's, that's not in addition to the $27, that's a part of what that $27 represents. The following year, again, with that, that would I have proposed on the earlier slide in issuing that secondary ban for $18 million. The 22, 23 fiscal year, that would be an increase of 0.68% on the tax rate. It would, again, this is for all of our projects, it would result in an increase in individuals' tax bills of $121.47. And again, that portion of the Hillside tax increase would be $77.74. And then you can see when, in, in the following year, when we do issue that bond and with the resulting tax rate increase would be, which is 1.17. And then again, with the increase in, in individual taxes at $210. And again, the portion that represents Hillside is 134. And just, I just pointed out again, five years, again, as we've been speaking about, we're not, there's never been a discussion about not doing Hillside rather than delaying it. So at what point, if we were to delay, you know, by 23, 24, we would start seeing an impact on taxes. Anyway, even with the delayed construction of Hillside. And again, these figures are based upon our average assessed valuation, which were given to us by the town of Greenberg on a home that's valued at 837,000 with the current average just school tax bill, not the entire tax bill, but the school portion of 17,836. So of course, if you're paying either more or less, these numbers may be slightly different for you. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is really just kind of in closing, what, what the recommendation for debt service considerations, I think, you know, what I'm recommending for the board to consider is that we do move forward with issuing bans for the first two years to minimize the impact for the next few budget cycles. Again, the first year we would be doing anyway. I, I think the, although the delays have been not, you know, great, the good thing is that the debt now and what the borrowing we're seeing is actually extremely favorable. So that's been a, the, the upside of, of the delays in seeing these projects started. I think it's really important to align the debt that we're talking about with the receipt of the building aid, because that really does help offset the larger principal payments, especially in the first few years when that, that comes on. It's important to, you know, make sure that that building aid's coming in, so we don't see large tax increases in those first couple of years. Another thing I think we should consider is, is we, we at times on the last bond, we did do a 15-year borrowing. And, and with these type of projects, many districts will do a 20-year borrowing. And again, this is not something we have to lock into, but in looking at the numbers there and thinking about the useful life of the work that is part of this bond scope, it is, it would make sense to consider doing a 20-year bond. And again, that would be, we would look at, you know, the rates involved in either doing one or the other of those. So I think that's something, when we get closer to that timeframe, we will definitely look into the, the advantages of either. And then again, another consideration in terms of thinking about the tax rate impacts and, and being sensitive to budgets in the next few years is, you know, we could consider at least in the first two years or the first three years of being strategic and releasing some of our reserve funds to help offset those bond repayments. You know, just to kind of help soften or lessen those tax impact to residents and to kind of help smooth the tax rate a bit. So, um, you know, that, so that was basically to summarize is my presentation this evening. I wanted to be able to kind of prepare some real dollars. We've spoken a lot about it, but just to kind of give you some of the thinking behind moving forward with, with Hillside, but also being thoughtful about the impact to our budget. And, you know, how we can, how we can move forward with the project, but also, you know, consider the financing behind it to, to help soften the tax impact in the upcoming fiscal years. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. I found that really helpful, particularly slide five in talking about the estimated tax rate impact. And just for, for, for the record and for folks who might be participating in our meeting tonight, I've not heard the board itself seriously consider delaying the Hillside project, but rather these questions have emerged to be responsive to the community who've raised questions regarding the financial impact to the taxpayer at a time when so many of us in our community are really, really feeling really burdened. So I, I wanted to thank you, Maureen, for preparing this information and for explaining in, in real dollars why the board has recently stated publicly that we want to stay the course with the Hillside project. If there are any questions or comments from board members.
Maureen, I want to thank you also for putting it out there the way you did. And while I think there certainly is a lot of reason for us to be going forward and I appreciate your thoughtfulness and how to balance things. I think we do have to acknowledge that unless I'm missing something, that it, it still means that every year there's a tax increase for people. And I think sometimes that's a hard thing to swallow. I think we sort of expect there could be a tax increase and then it can stay, you know, flat for a couple of years. And I, I think even though each year it may not be that much, just going on the, the average that you presented, over the course of five years, it becomes $800. And, you know, that becomes a, that's a, that's a chunk of money for people and for people, when people are concerned and not knowing what's happening economically. And so I, I think, I know there are a lot of reasons that people in the community have concerns about whether we should be going forward and what we're doing. But I think from a tax perspective, I think we do have to acknowledge that it's not without a cost to people. Obviously, there has to be a cost for us to get something back. But at the same time, I appreciate the way you're trying to balance it so that we can do it in the best way possible.
Yeah, and I just wanted to clarify, Jody, just for the portion of Hillside over five years, it's closer to $500. I mean, just to kind of, because of the two columns, I, not that it's a, I agree, it is still an increase. But we also, you know, there, the discussion and Lauren's right, it wasn't from the board. But, but again, trying to be responsive in, in our thinking to the community and why moving forward from a financial perspective is actually more prudent than, than delaying. more prudent than, than delaying. I think that, that's also the big piece that we wanted to discuss tonight because it's not so much as saying we're not going to do it because people did vote on a bond and, and part of that bond was the hillside addition in there. When people vote on an entire bond, it, we can't just scrap pieces of the work, right? So that, that was never discussed, like we can't, like that would require some, some other type of vote, I would imagine, because, you know, people could accuse us of, well, I voted to do the hillside project. I didn't vote to do the roof at hillside. I mean, there is a, you are required to kind of move forward with the work. But, um, you know, that being said, I think just really what I'm trying to show today, it actually is the more financial prudent way to move forward with the work and, and that's really what, you know, what, uh, but then thinking about how do we do that? And really being mindful of trying to minimize or offset, you know, those tax rate increases in, in the near future. But the, the cost of doing this project because of the financing is so much lower and the tax rate associated with, with it in general, I mean, that, that's the only uptick to this kind of bond for us right now, because when we went initially, we went out to the voters at that time, we were looking at potentially about a three and a half to 4% bond borrowing that were some, somewhere in that neighborhood. Now we're looking at 1%. I mean, so the cost of doing this project, I don't know if you remember when we presented it for all the bond work. At one point we were looking at about $400 to $500 a year increase to each taxpayer just for one year. And now we're looking at that over a five year period. So I think, again, part of the, the idea of the presentation tonight is what I believe is really the, the more financially responsible way to move forward. And that's the, what I was trying to demonstrate with the presentation as well, because it is about the long-term health of, of the school district and borrowing at a low cost and being mindful of how we structure that debt, how we pay for the debt. You know, how do we potentially use some, some reserve money and being thoughtful about offsetting some of those tax increases, I think is what we, what, you know, I kind of wanted just to summarize at the end and, and with the help of the finance committee, we'll, we'll work to see how that, how, you know, how we do plan for those three to five years out, because that, that's really important with all of our budgeting work, including our, our debt and our capital spending.
This was really helpful. Oh, sorry Doug. Well, this was very helpful for, for me to understand the changes that you've made to lessen as, as much as possible, the impact on the public. I hear what you're saying, Jody. It looks like Maureen has been as mindful as she possibly could. In fact, even more so because costs will just increase in the future. And we know that the space issues are not going away and this kind of investment has not been made in quite a while in terms of expanding space. And I, I do remember when we collected information about our neighboring districts that our district came in much, much smaller in terms of space per student. One of many statistics that we found and including the amount that we had really put towards, towards that and maintaining our buildings, a whole host of things that this money is going towards. So that, that's something for people to consider as well. It's going to have to happen at some point, although, and, and delaying it is going to cost more. Plus it has been voted on by, I think it was Doug, what was it? 58% of people wanted this, wanted this approved because they understood that and they understood that programs would start to have to be cut because of space issues as well. So things to keep in mind.
And I think it's also just to go back to conversations we were having two years ago that not doing the addition of hillside also had costs. So as we looked into, for example, so one of the things that was clear as the state came in and did their assessment of the building is that we were out of code for a variety of spaces that were going to have to be updated anyways. And the only way we were going to be able to do that was by getting trailers and those trailers aren't free. Those were like quarter, three quarters of a million dollars each. If we need to do two of those, that's $1.5 million of sunk costs we can never get back. And, you know, those come out of an operating budget. So I think, you know, what's, what's I think challenging is in this moment of COVID is to remember all of those detailed conversations we were having over a two-year period that drove some of these decisions, many of which have come up here. But I think it's really important to realize that there was no scenario where this was a no cost, you know, situation.
I want to thank you, Maureen, for preparing this. I think it's really helpful to, to talk about. And, you know, I, I look, look forward to the future conversation regarding the 20 year versus 15 year. And I'm sure you'll let the board know when it's an appropriate time to, to consider that. And I think, you know, I think what COVID is telling us more than anything is having enough space and educational space for students is key to providing the, the safe learning environment that students need. And, you know, the whole time that we're discussing availability of space, one thing that it keeps me slightly energized is knowing that it will be coming. And unfortunately it wasn't here soon enough, but I am glad that the community did support this bond. And I appreciate seeing how it's more financially responsible to stay the course. Because we had been talking about that, but seeing the hard numbers is really helpful. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes. And thank you, Maureen, for all your careful analysis and, you know, history, you're, you celebrated your 25th year of service in the district and that pays off as we can see in someone who can connect all the details across, you know, 25 different budgets and I don't know, five or six construction projects or whatever the number has been. So it makes a difference, you know, your experience and your analysis and obviously, you know, your high degree of, of care and integrity about the work. And I hope that Jason, who's our new communications and public relations specialist will be interviewing you so that this information gets captured, not only in the enterprise, but, you know, other, other outlets, because it's a very, it's a very important part of untangling sort of the narrative around how you can't drop this and, you know, pause it in what the implications offered for doing so. And so, thank you, Maureen.
Thank you, Valerie. Yes, I, I, I think it, I'm glad that, um, you know, that people found this helpful. And I think just to try to understand the, the thinking for the board and, and we've had a lot, of course, a tremendous amount of discussions and we are still committed as we have been to trying to, you know, not use or, you know, minimize the cost of the entire project. Again, that's always our goal. And that's, you know, the, where we're really reining in some of the costs and we went line by line through our music department, our music overhaul today with the architects. So, you know, the, the, the idea of being mindful about the overall cost is still there, but, but proceeding with the work does make the most, is, makes the most financial sense for us as I've kind of, I hope you, I demonstrated for you tonight. Thank you.
So we have a number of new business items. The first of which is the revised 2021 school calendar. This is to reflect the change of November 3rd election day. So I don't know if board members have questions or concerns about this change in the calendar.
What is it? What does it change? November 3rd was off before?
November 3rd was technically not, you know, considered as a, a superintendent's conference day nor an instructional day. And in order for us to have, to use any day for parent teacher conferences, it falls under that category of superintendent's conference days. And of course, since we took, we used all of ours at the beginning of the school year, we really didn't have any left. And, you know, contractually, the, there's always been a provision to have two half days. So we, you know, along with the bargaining unit presidents, made a decision to make that, you know, to take those two days that traditionally set aside in the contract to, to half days, pardon me, two half days set aside in the contract and melded that into two days, I mean, to one day. And the other, besides that change, that, that's also not a school day for children. So that's a significant difference. And as you know, the high school gymnasium or the, you know, the Cochran Gymnasium will be used as a polling location on November 3rd, which was, you know, the primary driver behind not having children in school. And then also as a result of the change and determination that of, that that was going to be a date that we had to develop from our existing five, emergency days that we, you know, we allocate every year. So one of those days was taken out of the five so that we can have this day as parent teacher conferences for the full day as well as a day where children will be home and parents are able to participate in parent teacher conferences and cast their vote. So that was the adjustment made.
Sorry. So I believe we do need to vote to approve the new, but a new calendar. Is there a motion to approve the revised 2021 calendar as it's seen in the agenda?
So moved?
And a second? All in favor? So the next three items on our new business are pertaining to district policy. The first of which is specifically some suggested revisions to policy 1230, which is public comment at board meetings. I can speak to that and then perhaps Valerie, if you want to take on the other two items. So public, public comment at board meetings is a really important and significant part of our meetings. It's, it's a really fruitful time for the board and administration to really hear from the community regarding issues pertaining to the district. But we have had some challenges in terms of the sustainability of our meetings in terms of the time allotted for these comments and their placement of them within the flow of our agenda. And while we, we do welcome and encourage it's many from the public to reach out to the board on issues pertaining to the district, it's really been something that individual board members have each spoken about. The challenge of being able to conduct the business of our meetings and administrators being able to conduct the business of running our district all day and then attending business, attending board meetings up, up until midnight. In, in while, one of the things that I began to consider was the fact that with Valerie as our superintendent, she's opened up various avenues for communication that are perhaps more productive than participating as a commenter at a board meeting. One thing that I noticed is that while the board gets to hear comments, it's not really a place for dialogue and that, that can be frustrating for both the participant in the meeting and also for board members who would like the opportunity to have more of a dialogue with community members. But one place, for example, that is an avenue for that are the superintendent chats that Valerie and Melissa have been hosting every other week. And also the, the PTSA and SEPTA have introduced open office hours in addition to their meetings. They have open office hours where community members can come and have dialogue about concerns as well as just the regular communication that community members can have with building leaders or even their students, teachers. So in addition, the board does get emails, which we all do read, even if you receive a short answer, we are really truly reading and absorbing the comments that come into us as they inform the decision-making that is constantly before us. So one of the things that we notice is that area districts have a limit on their public comments. It's very common for all of our neighboring districts to have a time limit. And that's something that we're suggesting that we change. And we're also suggesting that we put into policy the change that we began to address at the last board meeting where we stated upfront that the first comment period is for agenda items and the second period is for any open comment that has to do with district business. So the changes are seen in the policy that's attached. You can see the lining of what we've, the committee has suggested we change. And I didn't know if board members had any thoughts that they'd like to share about that.
I'll jump in. I think that this is a, always a tricky subject because we know that people always, you know, you know, feel like they, they want to be heard. I do think there's a lot of other avenues. And I think that it's a balance of, we want to hear the comments, but, you know, we also don't want our principals up until 1230 because we had to wait through nine, 90 minutes of comments that, you know, we could have gotten through board business and then listened to the comments. Board members, you know, you know, it's, it's, it's different. I'm not getting up the next day to, to oversee hillside or Hastings High School. But, you know, we've had some meetings where principals have left at 1230 and then I guess they're back at the school at seven the next morning. I mean, it, it's something that I don't know that people think about when, when we're 90 minutes into, to comments. So, you know, this is not to say that we don't want to hear comments. And I'm not on the policy committee, so I wasn't in the, the discussions, but, but this is to say, we need to put some parameters in place because I know as a board member, it's frustrating too. When, you know, sometimes we, we have, you know, 60 minutes of comments and, and, you know, 90% of them are the same thing. And we've said, you know, hey, if, if your comment has already been made, you know, maybe, maybe, uh, you know, we, we've already heard you. So I know that we're going to have people write and complain about this policy. But I also know that there's going to be people that say, hey, it's really nice to be able to watch your meeting and, and see it in three hours instead of four and a half hours. So I, I think there's a delicate balance. I, I think this is a, a great attempt at a, a finding a solution. It sounds like other districts are, are doing this in, in a positive way. I think we've already kind of shifted the first comment to agenda meetings, items, which, which is helpful because you kind of come in, there's preparation on the board members' side to come into these meetings. And, and we come in kind of ready to discuss subjects. And I think, what was it? Three meetings ago, two meetings ago, we, we waited till like nine o'clock before we started the, the meeting. And, and I don't think that really is helping us also clearly do sort of the governance of, of the board or of the district as well. So I'm supportive. You know, if other districts are doing this, it seems like, like it's working for them. I don't know why Hastings would be any different and, and, and we, we do have a lot of avenues for people to give comments. And if people want to do the second comment and, and, you know, the, the meetings go later, but our administrators can, can leave. I, I think that's a, you know, a, a win that we've already kind of figured out with this first comment section. So I, I understand the reasoning. I also know that folks will probably comment that they don't like, that they don't like this policy, but there is a lot of reason behind it. And I think the, 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 there's a lot of reasons to, to kind of keep it a bit more concise.
Thank you. I'd speak, Jeremy, I think, said a lot of strong points there. I'd like to also show I'd like to also show my strong support for this, just in today's meeting. If we could, we invited presenters. I think it's appropriate that our meeting starts with our invited presenters. And that they don't have to wait an hour to get to. Show us what we wanted, whether it's our consultants. Who are talking to us about the schedule. I also would piggyback on the previous two comments. When we have teachers and administrators that want to participate and watch. They should be allowed to log off. At the right time. And I think presenters and respect for those who are watching to see if their appointments go through. But the public comments absolutely keep them coming. We're here, we're willing to listen. We have a public comment right before the board speaks. And anybody wants to share anything, we are desperate to know the opinions of our community. But I think it's been a nice move from the policy committee and I thank Lauren and Valerie for spearheading.
Yeah, I think, I think it makes sense. I think, you know, I guess the question I had is, do you put this in a policy or do we merely just say? We'll provide public comment and that. You know, we, we cut that off at 30 minutes. 10 years from now, someone else is going to feel differently, a different board and they'll. They'd make a different decision. Is it, do you have to put it in a policy as opposed to just? But maybe that's just a. I don't know. And, you know, do we? I mean, I guess we limit the second one as well. I mean. If you're that committed and you've got that much of a point you want to make and you want to hang out and somehow there's an hour worth of people waiting till 11pm. I mean, they must be really fired up about something. So, you know, maybe you don't limit the second one. I don't know. That's another thought, you know, the, the other thing is. You know, I think there are times when there's a lot of things on the public's mind. And, you know, I, I think we also need to just. Create specific public hearings for different topics. That would just be, you know, I think, for example, people were questioning, you know. Something a couple of years ago and we've, we've put a, you know, a. 250 person meeting in the auditorium at the high school and it was just one topic and that was it. And so I think, yeah, that's one thing for, you know, I, I guess I'm okay. Yeah, I'm a little bit, you know, on the fence as to do, do you actually put a timeline in the actual policy? But, you know, I'm assuming that, you know, you've checked this out with some other districts and you spoke with the attorneys and. This is a standard operating procedure to put it in the actual policy. And so I'm, I'm okay going forward with that, but I do know there are times when. It makes sense to have a broader dialogue that will go past a half hour. I think nothing. Nothing will anger a community more. It can create more problems by putting a cap on something where the steam's got to get out of an issue. And, and so maybe it's just that we, when we notice that happens, hopefully. Once a year at most, once every couple of years. We put a, we put a public hearing together and actually have. A, a bigger dialogue about a topic as we've done in the past. And if, if we, you know, if we commit to doing that, which I think is a very. You know, basic and good thing to do, then I'm okay. You know, moving forward with, with this, I, I'm, you know, I, I know there are kind of stories where. A town, especially a town like Hastings, doesn't get an opportunity to get their. The air out of an issue and it can just create more havoc in the long run. So. That's my concern and, and if, 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 if we, if we commit to holding those when needed, I think, you know, this I can get, get on board with.
You know, to Doug's point, I, I don't know technically if we have to make this a policy or not, so I think we should check that, but. You know, years ago, we had only one public comment. And then we added a second public comment. And I certainly see the value of it. As far as this change, I guess I'm comfortable. Going with it, but what I'd like to say is can we try it? And at some point. In six months or something. Just have a chance to revisit it and talk about it and see if we think it's. Working along with the idea Doug that you posed, that if there's a specific topic. Or something that's really up, maybe we have a special. You know. Board meeting just to focus on that topic. I like that idea because those times are going to happen. We know that. But I think this is worth a try and we have to see how it works. So I'm, I can. I'm comfortable with going with it for now to see. If it's successful in terms of people.
Looks like we lost Jody midstream.
I, I similarly want to say that I am in agreement with the proposals that's been put forth by the policy committee. And it's really rooted in the fact that, you know, the public should understand that these business meetings. These are business meetings of the board in which we're called upon to conduct district business. And so, you know, I think that we want to do that in an efficient and orderly way. So because we also have to work within the confines of the open meeting laws. There are certain strictures that call for us to have these meetings in public. So while I think it's obviously always important to get that feedback from the public. We need to incorporate our comments in a way that's structured and productive and allows us to get through the business. Because we don't get to meet as frequently as we would like. So. I, I do believe that we've reached the point where we do need to modify our policy so that it reflects. Really what the standard is in our comparable districts. So I'm support.
I think I, I appreciate hearing the varying viewpoints and we did discuss many of. These ideas in the policy committee. I think the reason for it to be policy and not just stated in a meeting is to provide equity to people who are. Participating in the meeting so that. There isn't one topic where the board president might decide to cut things short and another topic where. They will allow things to move forward. And so in an effort to provide equity, there is a standard. For, for all meetings and that's reflected in other area districts as well as just common practice. And in terms of the public hearings, I think that's a really valuable thing. I know that. You know, we, we had one when we were discussing the bond, for example. We've had other. Meetings where it's just for public comp to see a presentation from the board and to have public comment. And to listen and to have dialogue and questions answered. And in addition, the, the requirements of the board does, does have. We do have to have several public hearings a year. Which don't have time limits. For example, the budget hearing is an open. Hearing where questions or comments regarding our budget are elicited from the community and there is no time limit. So that would be a separate. Circumstance and, you know, there are several of those that are requirements of the board on the most. You know, and significant pieces of our governance like the budget. So I think I'm hearing that we could consider moving forward with the changes that are proposed. Is there a motion to adopt these changes into our policy this evening?
Lauren, just a quick question. For policy changes, do, do we have to do a first read and vote on the second read or can we vote the same time it's first introduced?
I believe we can vote the first time it's introduced if it's an existing policy. It's not a new policy.
Okay, I was just curious about that. Okay.
If you would like to have more time with it and there isn't a.
I'm, I'm okay. I'm okay. I just want to make sure that we were following the proper. For some reason, I always thought we had to review it and then vote on it a second time, but maybe it's only if it's a new policy.
Does it need to be a policy?
I think it's a required policy. It's recommended as a policy by NISBA, which we're going to go through shortly, Valerie. The policy committee and the board have. We've worked with NISBA to do a full compliance review of all of our policies and Valerie's going to go over that shortly, but yes, this is among. The recommended policies of school districts. Not its particulars, but having one. Is there a motion to accept the changes to policy 1230?
I'm moved.
And a second. All in favor? So we'll move on to both the minute. The meeting and then. Valerie, if you could give us information about the NISBA compliance review.
Sure. So what you have as an attachment or is underneath nine. C are, are the minutes from the most recent policy committee, which. Is made up of, obviously Lauren Berman, Jeremy Gallin. The Goodman, myself and Melissa Samansky and. Melissa De La Barrera will be joining and in assuming the role of. A note keeper since she plays a very important role. In terms of making sure any adopted changes are then forwarded on to NISBA and NISBA is sort of the. Keeper of our policies and they ensure that they then are go on to be part of the policies that are in our, that are part of board docs. So that process is. You know, a, a very vital part of this whole management of our policies. So last year, the policy committee that involved. Lauren Berman, Sylvia Rowdewees and Allison Andrus, Melissa Samansky and myself. You know, we're considering how we would move forward and identifying the policies that required our attention and those policies are policies that. Have, have experienced some kind of change or adjustment, or there's been some change. You know, maybe the federal or the state level and our policies may or may not have been. Updated to account for those changes. So one of the. You know, avenues that, you know, I recommend it was one that I was familiar with, which was to. Have our, you know, whether it be, you know, sometimes an auditor can do this, but the most efficient. Avenue to pursue would be to have our policy agency, NISBA, the New York State School, School Boards Association to. Conduct a compliance audit, which is a very, you know, typical. Activity that they engage in with districts and are the, the. Contract was, was already board approved a few board meetings ago. And basically what they do is, you know, through their eyes and since they are the gatekeeper of all the policies. They present a couple of documents for us to review. One would be policies to rescind. Which are, you know, are no longer necessary in light of certain changes or perhaps they've been combined with other policies. And policies that do in fact require our attention and they, and then somehow. You know, pull those together and prioritize those in terms of, you know, the chronology of the policies. So in, in looking at those documents, you know, we still need to be able to. Prioritize what to focus our efforts and energies are on. And so at the November ninth board meeting, we'll have Suzanne Bopey, who is part of our Keenan Bean Legal Firm. Who specializes in the policy area will be presenting to the board at the November ninth board meeting. To provide that kind of roadmap to how do we prioritize? Not only the policies that, that, that recommendation's been made around, but also those policies which, which. NISBA recommends that we rescind. Because I think would be important for the board to be able to understand the recension recommendations and whether. The board, whether or not a legal counsel would also support those. So that will be what happens. And so the. Outcome of that will be a better process where the policy committee to engage as we move forward. Between now and June, there certainly will be an adoption of a new policy, which is a pandemic policy, which was. You know, a suggestion made from Governor Cuomo. With regards to how do we manage, you know, whether it be, you know, COVID-19 or, you know, the, you know, whatever that next pandemic is, you know. How are school systems organized to, to make sure that we can more quickly pivot and adjust to, you know, whatever those kinds of. Adjustments are that we have to make to be responsive and have schooling in some, you know, capacity. So. The, the, the. I guess the steps forward will be to, to hear those recommendations from our legal counsel. Both the recension, the recommendations for the policies that were recommended to be rescinded and as well as those that require some of our attention. And then the, our council can help us to sort of, you know. Organize the parking lot of, you know, what goes, you know, first and so forth and, and so that we can, you know, make good decisions for the school year. So I think that pretty much summarizes what item, items nine C and D represent.
I want to encourage board members when they are, are able to, to look at at least. The number and topics within. Those categories of being rescinded or making adjustments to so that. When Suzanne Volby presents, you can have any questions prepared. And, you know, I think it's a lot, it's, it's. It's a sort of, it feels like a dry conversation, but. The policies really enable our district to provide schooling to our students. So. What they say is significant and we need to make sure that. Our district's policies reflect the most current. Schooling recommendations and they're compliant with New York State law and federal laws. So there, there do need to be some adjustments that are made in order to bring that compliance forward and. I think it's, you know, there hasn't been a full review in some time. I know that there was a renumbering effort that occurred in 2014. Prior to when I was on the board, but a full compliance review. I don't know that we found a record of when that most recently occurred. So this is an important step in terms of providing the district with the type of governance it requires. And we'll now open it up for the second public comment. If Melissa, if I know that first there was a video prepared and emailed to the board. It was sent by a student and we'd like to. Share that first and then any other members of the community that are participating in the call. If. You would like to also participate by providing a public comment, if you could use the raise your hand feature. And Melissa can make you a speaker after this first comment, which is presented as a video. Thank you. Thank you for sharing that, Melissa. It was sent to the board by Nora Yaman. And now if you could please raise your hand if you'd like to participate as a public commenter.
I promoted Dr. Jen. She had previously emailed that she wanted to comment.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much. I want to thank you all for your hard work and dedication to our schools in these undoubtedly challenging times. As I stated previously, my name is Lauren Jen. I'm a Hillside parent and pediatrician. I also sit on the American Academy of Pediatrics Council on School Health as well as local and state school health committees. So like you, I've spent much of my time since March working on school reentry. I urge you to continue to maximize in-person learning for our earliest learners. I've seen how the Hillside team and district leadership reworks the hybrid model to prioritize learning for our kindergarteners. It's really amazing to see how they were able to put together a program in weeks, what other districts had months to do. I also appreciate the reworking of the system after our first positive case exposed new ways to improve. I am troubled, however, that there is rhetoric surrounding the return to school that presents this as a binary choice, education versus safety. Please try to reframe this discussion. As a physician, I know and fear COVID. However, we have increasing evidence that young children are ineffective drivers of the pandemic and that schools around the country and world are not sources of the outbreaks, even in areas of high community spread. Many epidemiologists argue that for our youngest learners, especially those who require outside childcare, the hybrid model actually poses more infectious risk to faculty, students and staff. Furthermore, this discussion minimizes the many other threats to health and safety that our students face with time out of school. I fully recognize that students are not the only people in the building and we must keep everyone safe. I would never advocate for anything that would place our teachers or community at risk. The greatest indicator for safe school returns seems to be consistently low numbers of community spread. The citizens of Hastings have worked hard all summer and fall to ensure this. I also applaud the district for working to create a remote-only option that allows all who desire this option to learn from home for any reason. I'd like to add my voice to the board members. Berman, Santi and Gallins, please continue to seek a solution for our youngest learners. There are only 88 first graders. Our teacher this year is the type of teacher every parent wants for their child. Her brick and mortar classroom is a magical place. My daughter and others in her class speak about her classroom with such joy. Our youngest learners stand to lose the most with virtual education. Despite the hard work of our educators, virtual learning is no substitute for in-person learning. These children are young, five, six, seven years old. They're emergent readers who lack the ability to safely navigate this technology independently. Our children are strong and resilient, but both personally and professionally, I see the toll this is taking on them. Sorry. Additionally, the economic toll on young families is becoming untenable. Parents have lost jobs, turned down career opportunities, been disciplined in our liquidating savings accounts to pay for childcare tutors or private school. Please continue to reevaluate with a goal of maximizing in-person learning for young Hillside students. Many of us in the community are here to help partner with you to make this a possibility for our youngest learners. It's true, we are not other districts. We're a unique district with many strengths. Please help us to work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'm going to promote Nora Yaman. She had submitted the video. I don't know if she just had a comment to make because she had submitted the video.
Hi, yeah, my name is Nora. I'm in eighth grade and the majority of the students in our grade, well, I don't know, but the majority of my friend groups have been very strong towards keeping Flex Wednesday. And so I created the video just to give us a voice and a platform to speak for the need to keep Flex Wednesdays because that's our time to catch up on work and it's very important for us to be able to stay on top of work using that. Thank you.
Thank you. Veronica, sorry, Alina. I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your last name. Veronica?
Yes, I can, you can hear me now, correct?
Yes.
So dear board members, Dr. Henning Pimont, thank you for the opportunity to speak. And I would like to briefly comment on the Flex Wednesday report shared with you on October 20th session. It was reported to you that the recommendation from the district perspective is to convert Flex Wednesday back to an instructional day in spite of the journey that we've had as a remote learning committee. As a member of the committee, I would like to make very clear that the committee's recommendation was to improve, rework and keep the Flex Wednesday. Even when we have been directly told during the committee's last meeting that the Flex Wednesday would be definitely gone, several members raised their concerns and objections and in no way supported this decision. Now that I have clarified that point, I would like to share one important concern. While it was clearly within the district power to make this decision, I object to having worked on a committee whose only purpose at this point seems to have been to imitate the faculty support of the district autonomous decision. I don't believe that we, as the dedicated and experienced faculty, deserve such treatment. The district has to be transparent in its communication with the faculty and the community. We would expect no less from them. We, the teachers, are here to help, support and problem solve. When you seek out our input, please do it in good faith, with an open mind and based on mutual trust. And if it's not important or valuable to you, simply don't include us in your narrative. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we had David Skolnick. I don't know if he left. He may have left. Oh, he's back. David?
David Skolnick, if you're on the call now, if you unmute.
Yeah, can you, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great, thank. Yeah, I'll try to make this as concise as possible. First, in general, I'll reiterate what other people have said about respecting all the work that you all have been doing and its immense undertaking. So let me be to the point. I first wanted to commend Nora's presentation and I thought it was very effective and wondering if it would be a presentation that would be linked in some way to the board site so that it could be reviewed. It was a little hard to read that quickly, but I thought it was very effective. Secondly, the point, the presentation, Maureen's presentation, which was also very effective, basically focused almost entirely on the financial aspects of the, the construction project going forward. And what I'm concerned about is that a lot of the issues that were raised over the last weeks by a nu, many people who have been involved very, very intimately with the functioning of the school over the years, there was clearly a difference of opinion. And so one of the things that I think is, is missing in the discussion right now, and I don't know how it could be linked in with the timetable, but I'm not seeing a discussion of the issues that have been brought up that I think are very valid. For example, it's not clear what might be non-compliant with the current situation, with the, the plans that were voted on. We've changed, so much has changed since this plan was approved. And I'm not aware, maybe I've missed it, but I'm not aware of any thorough review of the plans in the context of what we're dealing with now. In other words, whether the design will actually serve our present purposes to, just to connect to what Valerie referred to just before with regard to the policy. I, I'm not sure if, if, when we're done with the work, we'll still be faced with non-compliance with regard to the COVID needs, whether the spaces that we've designed will still be adequate for what we may continue to need going forward. Secondly, or thirdly, in some of the...
You have to wrap up your three minutes or...
I'm sorry. I have three minutes?
Yeah, there was three minutes.
Okay, I have to say though, that I, I have this intense feeling that the comments that I heard just before me went beyond that. But nevertheless, I will try to, okay, then I'll try to do that. Concerns, and I will send you, I will follow up when I'll send these concerns to you. Disruption of the construction as it relates to a hillside is, I haven't heard addressed and I would like to hear it addressed. You should understand that the comments, the public comments are helpful to other people, other community members that are listening and are involved at the same time. There's, that's an element that you, that you kind of glossed over. It's, it's, I understand communicating with the board, with the superintendent is done in a number of ways, but the community can benefit from hearing what other people have to say and you should keep that in mind as well. Public hearings, unfortunately, we can't do public hearings. The very nature of what we used to do as a community at the moment is unavailable to us. So you should think clearly about how, what we can do to, to supplement, to, to work around that. Keeping in mind too, that standard operating procedure, which was mentioned by a number of people.
Guys, let's try to keep it a three minutes so that it's fair. Yeah. Yeah, if you could send the rest to the board, thank you. I'd appreciate that.
Yes, I'll do that. Standard operating procedure is what I would end it. It's not what we do here necessarily, just because everybody else does it. We don't necessarily have to do that and shouldn't feel compelled. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. And the last person we have is Andy Zimmerman. Thank you. Mr. Zimmerman, if you can unmute yourself.
Right, okay, got it. Okay, thank you. Okay. Well, I was going to say one thing, but I'm going to say a couple of other things too. I agree with the video about the Flex Wednesday. Very well done. And, and my son also is fully remote and especially for those fully remote students, it's important. About the limit on the comments, I don't agree with that. I think what you're going to see is organized people, groups of people coming in and packing in the comments so nobody else will have a chance if they're limited. And I certainly hope you will revisit this, you know, as I believe one of the board members said, after a few months and see how well it's working because as David also said, we want to hear what each other says, not just for you to hear what we say. Okay. But the thing that I mainly wanted to talk about was the hybrid is working better than I ever expected or the, I should say the remote learning, the way it's being done. The teachers are really heroically striving to teach to the students in the school and at home at the same time, although it's a very difficult thing to do and I think it's wearing on them. And it's not ideal that the students at home and school cannot hear each other. And I'm not sure why, when everybody is at home, they can all see and hear each other on the computer, but, but why when half them are in school, the students at home cannot see the ones in school? That doesn't make sense to me. I would like it so they could at least hear each other, if not see each other. And if we need some extra equipment for that to improve the hybrid learning, I mean, I know it would cost some money to get some different microphones in there so everybody could hear everybody at once and be teaching one class at once instead of two classes at once. But I think it would greatly improve the, the hybrid model if, if that would to happen. So I hope you guys, this was probably already been considered, but I hope it will be reconsidered again. I know, I'm sure that some of the teachers would be very happy and the students and parents would be too. Okay, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Melissa, I see through the Q and A that Amy Nichols has asked to make a public comment.
Yes, I am going to promote her now. I just saw that.
Hello? Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. I just, in light of the, the earlier discussion about public comments, I'm going to make this really brief and not go into the detail that I was going to. I really appreciate everyone staying on this call. I just, I really just want to reiterate my support for hearing the teachers' voices. I really, really appreciated being able to hear from our building leaders about our teachers' views and opinions on the, on the current model as well as the idea of having more students in the building. It was very, very powerful to me that they were unanimous, which I assume doesn't happen all that often really in our communities. So I'm just, I'm very glad that we've made the decision for this month to, to really respect their opinions and expertise. And I want to make sure, you know, we have as many opportunities as possible to hear from them. They're really the voices that really determine the success of our, of our school district. And I'm increasingly concerned about folks who are leaving. And so I want to just make sure if we're thinking of solutions for families for whom the models are not working, that we're thinking of solutions that prioritize our teachers' needs and our, our teacher's safety. I'm thinking maybe some outside of the box solutions. I know I wrote into the board about, you know, reaching out to the village and determining spaces that could be used. But again, any, anything that we do, I really do hope that the teachers' voices are prioritized as we really, we, we are not an educational district without, without our teachers, our greatest resource. So I thank you so much for listening and, and your attention and all the work that you're doing. Thanks very much.
Thank you. There's no more public comments, Lauren.
Thank you, Melissa. Are there any comments from the Board of Education?
Yeah, I just want to say that I think, yeah, I think as a board, we can get caught up, we have to in a lot of the just kind of details and debating back and forth, the finer points of a variety of topics. Obviously, the biggest one these days being the mode of schooling that we're doing. And I, you know, think in the kind of the short timeframe and the ability that we have to just kind of make the points and how we're thinking about it, taking in so much feedback from so many different sources. You know, we're not stopping to really, I think, just think about the experience of everyone in the school on a day-to-day basis and how challenging and stressful and I think probably for just absolutely exhausting it is from worrying about, did I just clean my hands, does this kid write? Is there someone, you know, moving children, for example, hillside in and out, two different sessions, the buses? That I, it's just, it's a level of complexity and exhaustion on top of worrying about what's going on. If you're a teacher, an administrator in your own home and your own family, that I think we're all really aware of at a, at a kind of theoretical level, but from an experiential level, having to live that day in and day out and the level of exhaustion.
But from an experiential level, having to live that day in and day out, the level of exhaustion, I can only imagine. And so I really just want to take a second to thank all the teachers who are coming in every day, all the administrators who are coming in every day, everyone who's doing their version of juggling, the teachers are juggling the kids, the administrators are juggling the buildings, the central offices juggling the, some of the administrators who are juggling, some of the teachers who are juggling, some of the students who are juggling, their own family. It's like, it's such complexity and such exhaustion. And I just really want to say thank you from, you know, the bottom of my heart for everything that you're doing. It is not, it's not missed, and it's deeply, deeply appreciated. So thank you.
I have a couple comments. First, I wanted to just revisit a couple of things that were said. I was thrilled to hear about the solar panel idea. I loved that Peacock came and spoke to us tonight. The synopsis for different departments that Melissa mentioned. I think people really appreciate seeing those. And then, in terms of Flex Wednesdays and a lot of other approaches that are going on this year, it's it's very, very tough, I think, on everyone, the teachers, the administrators, the parents. Because as as you make one decision, that means a whole other group is going to disagree and be upset that that decision was gonna be made. And I am saddened when I hear, you know, a teacher say that her opinion didn't matter or the committee didn't matter. Because I think there's, this is a real balancing act, and it's not just one group that has to be heard. It's it's all sorts of things that are coming together in order to make hard decisions. We do want to hear from the teachers. You know, we missed hearing from the HTA at our last get-together as a board with the principals. I hope they will come and speak. And I'll mention again, I know that some people on the board did not like this idea, but as a way to incorporate some teachers' ideas with some of the needs of students, I go back to throwing out the idea for some time for teachers to collaborate in the morning and then the rest of the day being a a learning time in school. Just to continue that, as a teacher for 15 years, I I found that that is the one thing, that professional development, that collaboration, it really helps teachers problem solve and feel re-energized and learn new technologies, a lot of what's going, what they need to do today. So I can't stress how valuable that is. I do know from going to the Westchester Putnam County meetings, you know, they did mention a lot of schools are looking at their Flex Wednesdays and trying to decide what to do with them. And sometimes they have incorporated the some professional development time, even if it's every other week or something of that sort. So, you know, maybe we can continue to look at that day to see how to meet more people's needs, even though I know we'll never meet everybody's needs. It's, you know, just too much of a difficult situation. So just putting that out there.
I'd like to, of course, thank everybody who's still with us. It's 10 o'clock. Obviously, this is an important time for our community and our residents. I'd like to stress one point that I think might be not getting as clear a room. We have three models, and I think it was pretty unanimous that November was going to be hybrid. And I definitely hear the parents and the teachers who are all saying that. But what we're not picking up on as much is that hybrid is our model that's changing the most. I think we made a real nice change at Hillside. We went to AM PM. I think we made a real nice change to hybrid, getting kindergarten in. And our Flex Wednesday is being considered as a change to hybrid. And that's the role in crisis management, to continually try to optimize. And in this case, we're trying to optimize in-person learning while watching safety. I'd also like to to change a little bit of what I'm hearing. I thought Melissa's presentation was very clear on Flex Wednesday. There were percentages given, the teachers were in support of keeping it. The students were in support of keeping it. And the parents were not in support of keeping it. And the administrators were not in support of keeping it. So I don't think the teacher's opinion that was expressed is actually accurate. I believe we have committees, we took a look, we heard that teachers and students were less interested and parents and administrators were. So I believe this is about optimizing hybrid. And I hope that we continue to consider every month ways to optimize our hybrid model. Our two-and-a-half-hour work session was actually not that much of a work session. We mostly listened to presentations, and I hope in the future we get a chance to build from the 23 panelists and come up with ideas to continue optimizing hybrid. We are not looking at a binary choice of when to go all-in or when to stay hybrid. All-in is a very unlikely and challenging thing for our school. But hybrid has many forms. Nobody's buying the Prius Model 1. It gets updated every year. And I think every month, we have the talent and the energy to continually strive to look at changing our hybrid model.
There any additional comments from the board? Is there a motion to close the Board of Education meeting this evening?
So moved.
And a second?
Thank you.
All in favor? Thank you, everyone. Have a very good evening.
Good night.